Alright, so why don't I open this up so we can get some of this stuff done? Because we're gonna, our agenda's all has to go all over the place because I got, I thought that Jay had told me that the people from Central Street were not going to be coming tonight, but they are coming tonight, so.
Oh.
Yeah, we have to move stuff around once again, but anyway, so let's go. Um, I'll read my script and then we can, um, I got some mail that we need to discuss and then we can move on. Uh, good evening, this is Tuesday, May twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference accordingly, please be aware that folks may be able to see you. The ugly band t-shirt you decided to wear tonight or anything else you intend to or not screen share with your computer. Anything you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever and will wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your neighbors and friends. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board, permit me to confirm that all members of the Planning Board are present and can hear me prior to me calling meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Uh, Tim Wheeler.
Yeah.
Jay Teach.
Here.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
And Tom Sanford here. Uh, with the quorum of the wood call present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty six P M Tuesday, May twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board to be conducted remotely consistent with the governor's, Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of the open town, open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After their concluding remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide any comment, questions, penetrating insights and or motions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure that accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you yield the floor to state your opinion before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another board member, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. So in our mailbox, we had a couple of things. One of them is a bill for the newspaper, for the public hearing notices, uh, for three hundred and six dollars and sixteen cents.
I moved the week pay three hundred and sixteen dollars and sixteen cents to.
It's local IQ New England.
Yes, them.
Uh, second.
Hey, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask you to vote to pay this bill. Oh, it's, uh, written to desk is Gatehouse Media, so it's, it's consistent. It's not going to, uh, somebody that is trying to dupe us. Uh, so I'll ask you to vote. Uh, Tim Wheeler?
Yes.
Jay Teach. Um, okay. Uh, Carol McDonald.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Tom Sanford, yes. Uh, so I'll write up a warrant for that to be paid. Uh, then the other thing that we got in the mailbox was we've got two, um, the housing needs surveys were in there. So where do we deposit?
It should be a box. It should be a box that Eloise has in the isn't, isn't there one right outside her office?
Uh, they may have. I wasn't looking specifically for that. I was sort of surprised that they, I just grabbed the mail. I didn't go through it and then when I.
I wonder if, I wonder if she got some and put them in there.
Uh, I don't know, but these two cert, uh, two survey were put in our mail slot, so we need to.
We talked about having a drop, Dropbox somewhere.
Correct, there was one in the town hall.
There's one in the town hall, one in the library, one in nineteen Carter.
Okay.
And then um, we, we sent a ton of the flyers to Soya Hill and to
Brooklyn.
Brook Lane.
Yeah.
So, um, I thought I'd go around this week to those three drop boxes and see what was in them.
Okay.
And I can get in touch with Emily and say, hey, how are we doing? Cause if, if we're not doing very well, we probably want to do some sort of blitz starting in June.
Right.
Right.
Right. We have no sense. She hasn't talked to us.
No.
Okay.
I mean, I, I can see why. I mean, she might as well wait a little bit anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's been three weeks.
Two weeks, through three weeks, yeah.
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 And they they went out at the, they went out in the backpacks last week, week before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we've hit, we, you know, we've hit a lot of the groups certainly.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. I'll check with her later in the week and I'll go around and see what's in the boxes. I know there's some in nineteen Carter. I looked in it the other day and, but I didn't take them, so. Good.
Good, okay. Well, that basically, uh, cleans up the mail and the, um, and the bill we had to pay. Oh, um, the other thing, um, we had stuffed in our mailbox, um, the, uh, the maps.
I got, I got one of those too.
You got one of those too?
For conservation, yeah.
Okay, so if, um, what I did was I scanned them. So now I have them electronically. So if anybody wants them, I can email them to them.
Oh, yeah.
Very cool, yeah.
Nice. You're all right. I don't care what people say. You're all right.
All right, I'll email a copy around for that. What is it there, Tom? What? What do you have? The town maps.
Assessors maps.
Their assessors maps, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So at one point in time, way back in a million years ago, um, we also got a list of who's the property owners, but we don't get that anymore longer.
Yeah, you go to the assessor's site and, and find all that, so.
We had a nice printout of it.
Yeah, but.
That was really nice, but they don't do that anymore. But. So I'll email that around to everybody. Okay. Was, um, Jay, did you happen to get ahold of Annie or does she?
Um, I sent two emails, one with the wrong email address, wrong Zoom link ID and the other with the right one.
Okay. All right, could she be the first? One on the agenda.
I'll check and see. I don't think so.
Um, uh, the other thing, everybody got a copy from, um, the Bond Brothers group, uh, of their, um, attachments for what they're going to talk about tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Anthony is in the audience.
Yeah, well, he, that's for eight thirty.
Oh, that's eight thirty?
Yeah.
And there's Tom.
Mister Andrew.
Okay.
Do you want me to promote Tom?
Yeah, let's do, let's do Tom first while we're waiting for Annie, cause Annie's not in the crowd, is she?
No.
Okay.
And actually Anthony is now gone.
Okay.
So.
We scared him.
I know.
Hello, sorry, I had a little, a little trouble getting in and.
That's because you sent the wrong link.
Yep, yep. And then, and then I, then I had to, uh, dial, dial in manually because the link on my iPhone worked, um, only to make a phone call, so apologies.
Oh, no.
Don't worry. Don't worry.
That, that, that was a test.
Yeah, well, I, I, I was tempted to just give up, but. Uh, so, so what does the planning board do?
Not much anymore.
Well, the good news is we're into planning, not reacting, so you'll be happy about that part of our, our job.
Yeah. No, I am indeed. Oh, but I, I think the only real, real reason I was attending was just to confirm to people here that I would certainly be, um, willing to serve, um, and, um, I don't know whether it was my, um, optimistic expectation or Carolyn's salesmanship, but when she said uh, to be appointed for an unexpired term, I had sort of more. I, I had more in my mind, something like one or two years, but I'm, I'm certainly very willing to serve.
So Tom, I may have been incorrect. How much time is left on Janet's term?
Till next year, next spring.
So it is just one year.
Okay, great, cause Carolyn had said that she thought it might end up being a full term, so that's, that's fantastic.
Yeah.
I, you know, and I would certainly be willing to, uh, willing to serve.
Excellent.
I, I think this is wonderful. It's, it, it is interesting, however, that I was in the process of, um, engaging people to twist your arm to think about the housing trust. And when Tom said, oh, guess what? Carolyn has been up to some mischief of her own. I said, oh, she beat me with a punch.
Well, it's, it's, it's funny because Lisa Wysocki came over here for lunch last Thursday and she was twisting my arm about the housing trust and I said, um, you know, you have only yourself to blame because this is a social, this arose from a social event that, uh, that she organized.
That's right.
I said, uh, Carolyn actually put the touch on me uh, for Planning Board. Um, I did, however, look at, um, the chapter fifty-three thing and, you know, I'm, I'm, I would certainly be willing over the course of the next year. Um, perhaps to serve on it as a Planning Board representative, um, but looking at it, it seems to me there's a lot of administrative stuff to be done, organization, coordination with the town accountant and so on. And that's going to be the, the, the primary, uh, and, and understanding what we could do in certain, um, scenarios. Um, it seems to me that that's going to be the task for the next year and I, I'd be willing to help with that certainly.
Okay.
So see, Tim, we both, we both win.
Victory sign for, uh, for Tim. He's taking a victory lap around his living room.
Yeah.
The nice, the nice thing about the trust is they can hire help.
Yes. And they should. I read it.
And, and, and they have the Assabit Regional Housing Collaborative working with them and they have, um, the Metro West Development, Inc., working with them too, so. They've got quite a arsenal at their beck and call, so.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think the, the shorthand of that is there's plenty of support, which isn't always.
Right.
The case.
No, it is. It's, it's great. It, uh, you know, it's organizational support, um. I'm interested in the, in the area because it seems to me, yes, we have a structural tool, but do we have really the tools that will address the issue? But that will, uh, that's another thing we have to work on over the next year.
Well, and the nice thing is that it meshes well with the work we're doing to update the housing production plan and the housing section of the master plan. And the Center Village study looks at the housing issue. And, um, the Planning Board's keenly interested in trying to deal with this workforce housing issue, so. You know, it goes hand in hand. It's nice.
Well, I will say that, um, one of the things that sort of tipped me to, uh, volunteering for this is that, um, at FPC, we're looking at, um, the possibility of a capital campaign to preserve the buildings in the center of town. And, uh, in terms of the town center planning and we have to do some major capital things like hook up the meeting house to the existing current water supply, um, and, um, so I'm, I'm very interested in the center planning, um, in that capacity because I think that, uh, it, it gives an opportunity to look at how we preserve the architectural uh, center of town and so on, and that it might be helpful to have somebody who was familiar with what was going on at FPC in terms of that and, uh, and the town.
And who happens to live in the center.
Uh, yes, I do. Um, I'm, I'm, uh, insulated and I'll put that in air quotes from the center of town by a lumberyard, but. Yeah.
We don't know for how long.
No, 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 exactly. And that's a, that's a parcel that, uh,
Yeah.
you know, would be like a big desolate hole in the center of town if, if, um, if it disappeared, so. You know, I'm interested in that. Obviously, as that goes on, there may be some areas in which I would be conflicted as a, uh, as in a butter, but, uh, I'm you know, a resident of the center of town. I love the center of town and, uh, very, very interested in that.
Right.
Good. We're talking about an ideal candidate, huh?
I know, right? Um, do we want, I would, I would make a motion that we recommend Thomas Andrew to the select board to fill the remainder of Janet Campbell's term.
I'll second that. Now, I, I, I spoke to uh, Margaret and I said, is this a joint appointment? And, and her sense was that it, it was. So you may want to phrase your motion in that the, the, maybe we need to vote and say, we, we've voted to approve and we'd welcome their approval as well, maybe.
I think that's right, Tim, from, uh, I used to be a, uh, a town official and I think that's the rule.
Okay, so, um, I make a motion that we approve Thomas Andrew, uh, to fill the remainder of Janet Campbell's term and that we ask the select board to do the same.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion to this? Uh, I did have a conversation with Janet yesterday and she told me that she is either, she has either, she's in the process of or has done a resignation letter to Eloise. So I asked her for a copy of it for us. Uh, so that is in process. I just don't know where, if it has been concluded or not. Um, so that being said, is there any further discussion?
I would just like to say one thing and I'm, I'm going to convey this separately, but I'd love it if it was, uh, memorialized by the board that I have a very high regard for Janet's long service on the board and, um, apart from anything else, I consider it an honor to be appointed to her, the remainder of her term.
That's wonderful. She, you press gained both her and I at the same time to join this board twenty-two years ago.
Yeah, okay, so maybe, you know, I'm seeking redemption.
Or turn around is fair play.
Exactly. Revenge, revenge is a dish served best cold.
Redemption or revenge, I don't know, but anyway.
So seeing no further discussion, I'll ask you to vote to memorialize this for Thomas. Uh, Tim Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford votes aye. Excellent. Thank you for your future service.
Yeah, now, now, all right, so he's going to be Thomas and you're going to be Tom.
Sure.
If that works for everybody, um, does he, I believe Margaret also said that Thomas needs to write a letter to the select board. Is that true? Of his willingness to serve?
I can certainly do that. It won't hurt.
Yeah, it won't hurt. I, when, when I was appointed, a gazillion years ago, I just was, I was sent, I came to the Planning Board for a meeting. They said, okay, what do you want to do? I said, I want to serve in the Planning Board. They said, okay, fine, go see the selectmen. I went and saw the selectmen. They said, what are you doing here? I said, the planning board told me to come down. They said, okay, you want to serve? I said, yeah, they voted and I was on.
Right.
Yeah. There was no, there was no nothing.
I'll, I'll send them a quick letter saying that I, I, I would be willing to serve, not a problem.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to, just to make sure.
Yep, no, that's fine. And I will offer if they want, you know, I'll offer in the letter that if they want me to come in and talk to them, I'd be happy to.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, Tom Eloise has her hand up.
Excellent. Could you promote Eloise, please?
I can.
Thank you. Good evening, Eloise.
Greetings.
How are you?
Oh, there was a vacancy.
You did or didn't?
I did not know there is a vacancy.
Oh, okay.
She needs, she needs to put it in writing.
The letter's being written, yeah.
Yeah, so Janet, Janet had told me, Eloise, that she was, either she had or was in the process of submitting a resignation letter to you when I talked to her yesterday.
And obviously we don't send any of these things that we've talked about tonight until she's submitted her resignation letter, but.
Correct.
Right. Once she does, then I automatically send it to the Planning Board and the Selectmen.
Okay.
Okay.
Then you would get together for a joint appointment.
Um.
Uh, okay.
I didn't know, I, I thought it could be serial in the sense that if it was, um, recorded that the Planning Board had made the appointment and at a time later, the Selectmen also that that would, that would be okay, Eloise, but, uh,
It depends.
You're the clerk.
Uh, there is no vacancy and is it on your agenda to appoint somebody?
Uh, the, uh, gender says to discuss filling Janet's, um, term.
Good enough.
Yeah, I mean, a- alternatively, you know, we could do these votes in two weeks and, you know, we already know what we're going to do, so.
Right.
And, you know, what, what, what are you most comfortable with, Eloise?
Well, first I have to get Janet's written resignation.
Uh, we, we obviously totally understand that, yep.
Okay.
And then I notify the boards and then we'll take it from I see it as a major stumbling block.
What is that?
I said, I don't see this as a major.
Yeah, good, good. Well, maybe what I could suggest is that we, um, defer the effectiveness of this, these, the votes and what we've suggested until the next meeting. I, I'm not a member, but I'm just suggesting it. Um, and then we can just sort of push the button on it next, uh, next meeting. That's what.
When is your next meeting?
So, um, we were going to, our next meeting would be the second week in
June seventh.
June, huh? No, it's not the seventh.
Oh, it's the, yes, you're right, it's the fourteenth.
Right.
Okay.
So Jay is actually going to be in Europe, so my suggestion was is maybe sometimes we elect in June to only hold one meeting, so maybe we push it to the following week gets into more of the middle of June. And we do.
That's possible. Uh, may, maybe what I could suggest is this, and Eloise, I'd love your thoughts, is to take a vote that, um, the preceding votes will be effective as of the receipt of the notice of Janet's resignation and its transmission to the Planning Board and the Select Board.
Go for it and we'll see what kind of pushback you get.
Okay.
You got that? That, that way we can just move things forward and.
So I, I'll second, um, Carolyn's amended motion.
My, my amended motion to, uh, make it effective once Janet has officially resigned.
Yeah, once, once, uh, the Planning Board and the Selectmen have received notice from the town clerk of Janet's resignation, yeah.
Yes, so amended.
Yeah, good.
True, revote. Tim Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Perfect, okay, that should.
All right.
Excellent. Well, the audience is filling up. What do we, what's our next?
We were looking.
May I, may I say I'm going to drop off at this point and exercise my, uh, my rights as still a private citizen, um, cause this is the, this is the one night.
The last time.
This is the one night between now and, uh, July tenth that I, I'm going to see Hannah, so.
Oh, okay.
All righty.
Yeah.
But I did want to, you know, come on for this and to assure everyone that, uh, Carolyn was not fibbing and I was actually willing to serve, so there you go. All right, thank you, guys.
I don't know why I'm waving to Thomas to see us, but.
I can see you.
Oh, you can.
All righty. All right, see you, guys.
Good night.
The, the, um, Carolyn is, um, Annie in the audience for car, um, Central Street?
So for center, no.
Central Street, no.
No. I've, Tim, you can see the audience members, right?
Yep, but so if it's eight now, your, your schedule is eight thirty for the Solomon Pond?
That's correct.
And what'd you have between now and then?
Well, we were, we were going to ta-talk with Nanny and then, uh, when she canceled, I had the, uh, discussion about workforce housing, the starter stock, if we wanted to go to that or.
So Emily is in the audience.
Okay.
So I'd say let's bring Emily in and she can give us an update and we can.
Perfect.
Hear from her and then if she wants to escape, she may.
Okay, can you, Carolyn, can you promote her, please?
Working on it. Sometimes it works fast and sometimes it doesn't. All right, she should be. There she is.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello. Good.
Good, excellent.
Um, all right, well, I have an update for you guys tonight. Um, is it okay if I, yeah, I can share my screen. Um, I just put a couple of slides together just to make it easy. Okay. So. There we go. Okay, so we launched the survey for the housing plan on May second. Um, responses are a little slow at this point, so I'm going to talk about some ways we can ramp up the responses. Um, we have seventy-nine so far. Um, we use the platform Survey Monkey to, uh, collect and organize and promote the survey and everything. It's all done through that, so this actually gives us a, a breakdown of each day, the number of responses we've given, so, or, or gotten. So it's kind of interesting. You can see if there was anything special that happened one of the days, maybe. Um, so it's May eleventh, um, we got over twenty-five responses, so not sure what was special about that day. Any, any thoughts on this? Just initial, initial thoughts?
I, I was going to go around this week and collect the paper copies out of the drop boxes and I don't think there are many, but there are some. Um, so that we may jump the number by ten or so, I, uh.
Well, there's two here, so at least.
But I'm surprised that that twenty-five on the single, what, what day of the week?
I know, well, so I'm looking at the, it was the day after our last meeting. But I don't, maybe stuff went home in backpacks that day. I thought everything went out on Friday, but Julie was right on it. I emailed her after our meeting. I sent her the survey. The next morning she went. The next morning she went and printed it out and brought it to the school. So that could be from um, our school backpack stuffing distribution.
Great. That's great. You're able to do that. Actually, if I go to the next slide, um, it also breaks it down. This is one of the questions we ask people's age range. So I guess a fair amount from um, parents of school-aged children. We've also got the sixty to sixty-four. Uh, that's the highest amount, so.
Is that the next slide?
Yeah, can you see it?
No. Can you click on it?
Yeah, let me see. That's so weird. Still don't see it?
No. We're seeing your view, not the presentation.
Here we go.
Uh, it skipped. There you go. Keep clicking. Something will happen.
May fourth, by the way, was two days after the town meeting. That's why there's a flip there.
Yeah.
Right.
Sixty to sixty-four, forty to forty-four.
So you think the school-aged kids would be in the the thirties, right?
Right.
Yeah, thirty to thirty, thirty to forty.
Right. So that's fourteen percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so um, yeah, I just figured we could go over just to double check um what's been done so far, what maybe hasn't um, been done. So we did the handouts for a town meeting. Um, got the paper copies at the three locations. Flyers went out to schools in the backpacks. That's fantastic. Um, I checked the the website today and I didn't see if a link was on there. Um Does anyone know if that that was covered?
I think we were gonna email Mary, maybe, is that?
Oh, is um, Tim was um, your son going to look into how to go about doing that?
Yeah, let me check with James and see what.
I think that's what we had said.
Yep.
Okay. Um, we had thrown out, I think the Berlin Police, they have a social media account.
Um, well, the town of Berlin also has a social media account. I did put it on the Berlin Neighbors Connect as well.
Oh, great.
And I, I know at least one person posted that they responded.
Thanks.
So, so we got one out of that. Um, right, so Mary definitely is the moderator, is the person who posts stuff on the Town of Berlin website.
Yep.
Um. Does anyone want to reach out to her or give me her information just to make sure that gets, it keeps getting posted?
Yeah, um, so Mary Arada. And she is the uh, administrative assistant for the select board.
Okay. Yeah, I can connect with her.
Okay.
Um, so the highway department has an electronic sign um, that we mentioned at the last meeting. Um, any thoughts on putting like the link on there or directing folks to the the town um, Town of Berlin like homepage? Or is that kind of just used for like, I don't know, like emergencies or this wouldn't like fit in with uh, for that?
They have other things on it.
Okay, right.
Yeah, I was trying to think if if, how adaptable it is for this message.
I would say, you know, maybe like, please complete ser- town survey or something along those lines or complete survey, see town website.
Yeah.
Housing, housing survey.
Yeah, easy to read because you can't have it with a link and everything else. People would be crashing. Trying to figure it out. Well, they'll ignore it.
Right.
You are muted, Jay. It'll generate a lot of car accidents. Yep.
That's not the goal.
No, yeah, we. Well, when you get close to a deadline, people usually do stuff.
Yeah.
Right. And so what did we say the deadline was? June, the middle of June sometime?
Um, June tenth.
That's what I thought.
Good.
Yeah, so I just noted here, yeah, we've got about eighty responses to hit the ten percent mark for the town. We need two hundred and fifty more, so that's our goal.
Wow. Rub up your hot dog truck, Jay. We're going to the town car, town self-commons. There a notice at the store? Somebody put a notice at the store?
You know, Memorial Day's coming up.
That's true.
Um, so there'll be people hanging around in the center for that.
I don't think there's a parade this year.
Nothing?
So I read on Facebook that there was not going to be a parade.
So the the vets aren't doing anything at the cemeteries or anything like that?
Didn't say anything about that. It just said, no parade.
Huh. So no, no Lincoln address and Gettysburg address and all that stuff then, huh? Okay. I'll check with Bob Blair and this, you know, senior citizens. I'll, I'll check the Powderhouse News stuff.
And we already did the flyers at, definitely at Mosaic and Camelot.
And definitely.
And.
And Ron took them to uh, Brook Lane.
Brook Lane.
Right. Um.
Um, I can get in touch with uh, what's his name? The um, our contact at River Bridge. I'll get in touch with him. And then maybe I'll, I can draw, I still have some more of the flyers. I can drop off a few more down there.
Yeah, I sent all mine to Mosaic.
Yeah, just let me know if you need me to print any more materials. I'm happy to do that and drop those off. Whether it's surveys or flyers.
So I'll check the boxes for paper copies and I'll get in touch with Bob Blair about Powderhouse News and I'll get in touch with our contact at River Bridge. And I'll talk to James.
I'll drop the two copies that I have from a mailbox down to you, too.
Okay.
And the the cable bulletin board, um, has anyone seen if a flyer's been posted there? Um, that's like the the channel where it like rotates like slides and stuff, right?
Uh, yes, that is true. Um Is that Brittany Anderson? Tim, Tom, Jay, anyone? Think it is. I can, I can try to do the cable news.
Um, I know Brittany, too. I've worked with her for Boilston also. She runs the um like cable channel there, so I can also just reach out to her.
Okay. Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, no worries.
Yeah, but I think, I think it makes sense to get it posted on the town website and then that's where all of the, so the highway department sign or the cable news or whatever can all point to the website. The town website.
Which website?
Yeah, not my town government. The pretty one. Townofberlin.com.
Um, and then someone had mentioned um, one of the churches, St. Joseph's Church.
Yeah, I don't. Anybody know anybody over there?
Um, who do I know?
Yeah, I can't remember who brought it up at the last meeting.
Yeah. Oh, Eloise has pertinent information.
I can try to contact Sandra Riden, like she's does secretarial stuff at St. Joseph's.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Awesome.
Um, any other events or any, I know the school year is kind of wrapping up soon. Um Just any other like kind of face-to-face things where we can hand out flyers, talk to people, get the word out? That's too bad about Memorial Day. Yeah. Ah, darn.
Yep.
I was told that they, that the Boy Scouts were still having the pancake breakfast Memorial Day.
Oh, yeah, they're selling tickets for that on Facebook, so.
So what times that, that like seven thirty, eight o'clock?
It used to be like seven thirty to oh, ten.
All right.
But that was a long time ago.
Right. Let me see if I can find it real quick. Find the post. Course it's never fast when you're looking for it. Oh, oh, oh. No. Sorry. Oh, right here. Yeah, seven AM to ten at the eighteen seventy Town Hall. May thirtieth. Yep.
Okay. I'll find a way to get stuff to them.
Great, uh. Anything else? I think that's all that I covered on my list here.
That's good.
Great. Um, so do we feel comfortable keeping the June tenth deadline or do you want me to maybe um attend another meeting before then, just to let you all know or send an email just with a quick update? Um, maybe you want to extend it? What's up?
I said it would have to be an email.
Okay.
Because um, uh, it would be, our normally we would meet on the fourteenth. Um, so it would be after the deadline for our next meeting.
Okay.
Now, we've been talking about moving our meeting right to the twenty-first.
Yeah, to accommodate Jay.
So do we, we want to change the deadline to the seventeenth?
Move it out a week?
I mean, is, is that gonna, that's not gonna screw things up. I mean, it's it's after, I mean, if, if we were gonna meet in the fourteenth, I could see leaving it as the tenth, but since we're talking about moving, what the heck?
Yep.
Want to do, okay, one week or we could even do two weeks, too. Um Either's fine.
Yeah, I mean, the seventeenth is good because then we're meeting on the twenty-first and we'll have what we've got.
Okay. Um.
I guess spread a rumor that we're going to develop cluster housing. So it was that everybody hates. We could tell them what we're having to drawing for the car.
Right. I saw Tom shiver just a little when you said that, Jay.
Exactly. Still licking my wounds. Showed up for the uh, wetlands by, I mean, when there's an issue. We agree. Attendance, but how it has to get notoriety, you know?
Yo. Right. Well, and this is hardly controversial.
Well, we could make it that way.
Well, that's all I had tonight for the, I think I was just gonna be talking about the survey update, so. Um, but that sounds like a good plan to to get the word out there more about this.
Yeah, we'll give it a shot.
All right.
And so I should plan, plan to attend. Uh, what was the date of the meeting?
The twenty-first.
Twenty-first of June. Okay.
Yeah, and what time, um why don't we say eight o'clock?
Perfect. I'll be keeping a close watch on these uh, responses to see how they come in.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Emily.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
All right. So guys, so the twenty-first will be our only meeting in June?
Right. You have to do to make that official.
Well, we need to. That we, we switch our June meeting from the fourteenth to the twenty-first and that be our only meeting.
Second.
All in favor, uh, Tim Wheeler?
Hi.
Jay Teach.
Hi.
Carolyn McDonald.
Hi.
And Tom Sanford. Hi. Okay. Motion carries. I think the only other thing we need to do is um, there's a posting on the bulletin board outside of Eloise's office that we'll have to move to that um, date. Will that be a Zoom meeting?
Yeah.
Be the last one, probably.
Yeah. Well, yeah, uh, well, this is one of the twenty-eighth we have to cancel, right? Correct. Right. So we have to move the fourteenth to the twenty-first and cancel the twenty-eighth. And then I think that the, the order is effective the fifteenth of July. And I think that we meet potentially on the fourteenth of July, right? It's what, the tenth?
Is the, I, hold on. May, June, July.
Why twelve?
The twelfth.
Right.
Right.
I think your order goes in the fifteenth, or becomes effective the fifteenth.
Right. So we could meet July twelfth.
By Zoom, technically, yeah.
I wouldn't be surprised if they come to their senses with these numbers climbing again and.
Exactly. I was thinking the same thing, Tim. Postpone it for another month.
Yeah.
Anyways, we can, we can jump off that bridge.
Okay. So.
Okay, so um we have a few minutes before um, the eight thirty proponent. Is there anything else that we should take up for a timely item or anybody want to give an update on anything that we've got going on?
So this, the Board of Appeals So, this, the Board of Appeals has a application from the school. To put up a sign. That is, uh. Well. It's gonna be substantially larger than what's allowed. And it would also have a message board, a digital message board, and, and I think they're also talking about internally lit.
Correct, LED.
So three strikes and they're out, good lord.
Right.
So, and it's seventeen thousand dollars. So I think the ZBA would. Like to hear from us. As to how we. Feel. Yeah. I've often thought that although a municipality has the. The opportunity perhaps to avoid abiding by town bylaws. It, it ought not to unless there's some extraordinary circumstance.
I agree with you.
Cause it just does not set well with the citizenry if you start saying, oh, well, we're the government, we don't have, it's like state legislatures. Not having to take the ethics. Thing that we have, that the conflict of interest thing that we have to, you know, you think.
Right. Right.
I agree.
You guys don't have to live by the law, but everybody else does, it doesn't make sense.
Right.
Right.
I mean, I could see if they were looking for relief from maybe one thing, but to be size internally lit and movable copy, I mean, come on.
Right.
Where is this going?
They wanna, they wanna replace the sign for the school at the entrance to the school, so. Right on South Street.
Yeah, I will, uh.
Makes it different. Will you let the, let the ZBA know, Tim?
No, yeah, I'll let the ZBA, so our sense is that. We, we have trouble with internally lit, we have trouble with the message board.
And the size.
Yeah.
Right, because the size isn't just, it's twice as big as allowed on one side, and it's double sided. So technically, it's four times as big as a lot, as what's allowed.
So is the one they have now conforming?
Uh, it, it may be oversized a little bit.
But the rest of it.
But not by much.
Okay, so it's sort of conforming. But it, it's not internally lit, nor does it have movable copy, so. You know, eh, eh, like I said, what, you know, maybe one, we might be able to say, uh, I'm hold my nose, but you're going for, for three strikes, so.
You know. We did agree. With River Bridge to experiment with an internally lit sign. Um, in that overlay district. But I don't, I haven't heard any of us say that we're overjoyed with the result. Um, I mean, to me, it does not accomplish what I thought. The objective was, to me, it's harsher. It, it, uh, it's obtrusive. You know, I mean, I look at the signs for Duncan and. The gas, a shell, and it's, they're, they're far superior in my mind to what we're trying to accomplish, but.
Yeah, the, I mean, LEDs, there was one in Marlboro, oh my gosh, I would take the back road, back way off of Route nine. And you'd sit there at night at a light. I don't even remember what the cross street is. Um, on Route eighty five, and it would just, it was. Every single, poor, poor Savannah, I'm getting so old, every single time I'd be like, ah, I wanna throw a rock at that thing. Um, it was just terrible, how bright and. Uh, just obnoxious, it was just obnoxious. And.
How did we get the giant sign in the center of town that you're driving through? Which has got moving text and is way too big.
Highway sign?
Yeah.
So it's a temporary. It's supposed to be really for emergency purposes.
I think that makes it worse. I don't know, I mean, how do you, how do you? How is that allowed in?
It's certainly not as bright as.
And it's supposed to be for, for emergency information.
That's not what it's used for, though.
I know it's not, but that was the intent.
Yeah, that's why they were given out. Anyway, so I'll draft a letter and send it around to everybody.
The problem is, is if we open the door here, we're gonna open the door everywhere else, and people are gonna use that as against us to say, well, you're allowed the school.
Right.
Right.
You know, and if we give them the half-assed excuse that, well, it's a municipality and it's. You know, allow, we don't have to follow our own rules, that just is insult to injury.
Yeah. Okay, I'll draft a letter.
Alrighty, it's eight thirty one, can we, uh, move to promote, um, I believe it's Jason?
Yep.
Coming at, yeah. And there's also a Shelley Clark that says Solomon Pond. Where is she expected?
Um, not that I know of.
Yeah. Yeah, well, she's, she's the chairman of the board at Solomon Pond, she'll like that title, I think, so she should be promoted.
Promoted, okay. And I'm gonna put Eloise back. Hi.
Okay, Jason and Shelley are both muted, oh, there you go.
Guys, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Alright, well, I've also got another colleague that might join us, Paul McKinley, uh, I don't know if he's in the, in the attendance yet, but he's also.
Yeah.
Part of the project.
I will promote him.
So, good evening, uh, Jason Langwoodog, project manager, Bond Civil Utility Construction Company. Um, this is, I guess, our third go, um, we had a couple of meetings with the, uh, the ZBA. Uh, between April and earlier this month. And I just, I guess I wanted to be, uh, I guess clear. Before we get going, that, uh, Lynn had, had from the ZBA and said that the, that the ZBA was not the governing entity to give approval. Uh, on a variance for a contractor's yard within the Solomon Pond Mall, it would be, uh, the planning board for Berlin. Um, I guess I just wanted to confirm that. That's our understanding, anyway.
Yeah, our understanding is that Lynn conferred with town council, and town council said to her that it should come back to the planning board. And that it, it, because of the overlay district, it, it belonged to us.
Okay.
Um. So that's our understanding.
Understood. Uh, so I did forward a, um, a series of, uh, documents that was previously submitted to the planning board. That would show, uh, our overhead site plan, uh, some examples of some, uh, materials and staging that we would plan to use at the contractor's yard. Um. It is roughly about two acres, there's two separate locations, site one, site two. Um. We've been working with Shelley, you know, at, at the mall, just, uh, understanding what could be utilized for the space, uh, have met with Carolyn. Um, about a month or so ago at the comp con, just to, uh, present what we would be storing there, so. Uh, it is primarily gonna be used as a staging area, or planned to be if we get the approval. Uh, for, uh, HDP conduits. Uh, ranging in a ver- a variety of sizes from two inch to eight inch. Uh, and then it's also planned to be used as a, uh, soil staging area, um, within primarily the site one. Um, which the soils would be contained and organized within concrete bins, of which I've, uh, provided a couple of different examples of. What those would look like. Um. Site would be, um, contained, uh, with erosion sediment controls. Uh, so look, the adjacent, uh, catch basins to the locations would have, um, what we call. Uh, either like silt socks, or, um, it's another type of secondary erosion sediment control to be placed in, in the catch basins. Um. The project itself, right now, is intended to be roughly about two years. Uh, twenty-four months, uh, that's what we're hoping it sticks to. That's generally our. Our presentation for the site, uh, we did show on the site plan. The, the planned trucking routes that would be utilized, uh, in green, and that's, as of this time, the only. Locations we plan to use within the towns of, within the town of Berlin. The way that the, um. The way that the mall is separated, it's, uh, the only site one and site two are within the, the limits of Berlin, and that's what we'd be sticking to. There's a variety of signage that would be posted for, you know, trucks entering, trucks exiting. Um, you know, Bond Project Site, this direction. Would be a perimeter, uh, fence around it roughly eight feet tall, uh, driven posts. Um. With a series of lockable gates, uh, we did reach out to both, uh, the building inspector and the fire marshal. Um. About the contents of both sites, and, uh, we probably have just a. Um. A, a lock chain, you know, bar lock, the fire marshal's lock, whoever else would need a lock on the gate. It's a pretty typical practice for, uh, for our operations, so. Um. That's pretty much limited to, to our presentation on our, our proposal or our petition, I guess, for the, uh, for the location.
Does any board member have any questions?
So there are two sites, one. Up front. Up front, let me get oriented here.
Sure, yeah, so there's.
Yeah, the smaller one, the smaller. Green outline is in the upper pad.
Yeah.
In front of Sears.
Correct.
And then the other one is behind.
But the upper one is only gonna be materials, it's not gonna be soils, right? There's no bins in the upper one.
Correct, we're, we're planning to utilize that with site two, I'll say the northwestern, uh, northeastern, I'm sorry, portion of the, of the property would just be limited to conduit lay down.
The, um, it, it was a wheeled excavator that you had planned on for. Loading, you know, loading materials and things like that.
Yeah, we, we had discussed that previously, I think the, the equipment that would be limited on site would just be, um. One front end loader. Uh, with a backup alarm, we'd talked about utilizing both sites potentially for, um, you know, lay down of other equipment just overnight. Uh, I think, I don't think we're gonna be utilizing this location for that, it would just be a front end loader, which would be present. Um, you know, at site one and site two, just to handle material and. And to handle the, the soils that would be incoming and, and staging those.
So where do you plan, do you, you plan on storing fuel on site for that vehicle, or is it gonna be site? You know, delivered diesel or whatever to.
Correct, yeah, we, we wouldn't, and we wouldn't hold anything on site, it would be a delivered diesel, yep.
Okay.
What do you anticipate the in and out truck traffic to be like on a daily basis?
And so it's a bit subjective, Carolyn, just based on our schedule at, at peak, um, we're planning to have about four dedicated trucks to the job. Um. At peak, we would have around a thousand yards transported during a day. Um, and that's for a very short, um, amount of time, but, um, that would run, I think, one truck roughly every ten minutes. Um, for the calculations that we had, uh, but again, would just, that'd be our peak. Um. And then would typically operate probably one truck, uh, every twenty minutes to half an hour would be the, um. Average, I'd say.
And I assume that's going in and out on River Road.
Uh, we'd be utilizing, uh, Donald Lynch. Donald Lynch Boulevard.
To two ninety?
Uh, no, we'd be coming straight, straight from, uh, downtown Hudson. To Solomon Pond Mall.
So park straight up by the, by the hockey rinks and in that way.
Korea, we'd be passing the rinks.
Yeah.
So the only portion of Berlin, I don't know if Jason has this in his paperwork, the, is on the mall property that the trucks will be going.
Right.
Correct.
And that's, uh, Monday through Friday, no weekends or?
Uh, for this particular location, we're, we're looking to utilize a Monday through Friday. Um. We did have a previous meeting with the ZBA and, uh, with various butters, um, you know, came to. I'll call it an understanding that we wouldn't be utilizing anything past five PM, um, I think on the site plan, we, we had written, and it was gonna be eight AM to five PM. Uh, Monday through Friday operation for us, uh, we don't anticipate to have any light plants on site. Um, the, the only noise, uh, generating item should be just the, the, uh, the front end loader with its backup alarm.
The one, one truck every four minutes is the. Peak, how many total trips per day?
That was, that was at peak, um, Jay, and that's for very abbreviated duration. Um, there's a possibility that, that's not even, that won't even be needed, depending on. Um, some other variables with the project, but I'd say that's worst case scenario, uh, it would happen for a very short duration, you know, maybe. A few days, a couple, a couple, three days. But on average, we'd be looking at a, a truck delivery probably once every twenty to thirty minutes on average.
So, um, I don't know if anybody's asked this, or whether you've offered it before, but how about dust mitigation?
Yep, so we, what we will be having, um, you know, with the storage, uh, we're required to abide by. Uh, a plan that, that limits, um, limits dust, so on the site itself, you know, we'll have the bins, we'll have to cover those in a poly. Um, to eliminate any kind of fugitive dust. Um, you know, we'd be, we'd be monitoring or tracking the trucks that come in and out and any type of. Um, you know, we don't anticipate any, any spoil, but anything that would be within the perimeter, we would clean up and. Um. I don't think it's, I don't think a street sweeper would be necessary for something like this, but it would be limited to just. You know, inside site one and site, actually just limited to site one, but, um, you know, we would have a, a presence on site to. To mitigate any type of, any type of dust, if it, if it is generated.
And that would be attended to daily, weekly, monthly?
We, we would have, um, we'd have somebody on site, you know, there'd be minimal of, uh, the operator and the loader on site for any activities that we would have. Um, we will have inspectors, and I think Paul can speak to this, who's, who's there too, we will have. Um, you know, a series of inspections that'll be ongoing throughout the project and not just, uh, this location would also be included within that scope.
So they, what did it, was Paul's job to inspect the quality of the soils and stuff?
Yes, Paul can speak to that, but.
Yeah, no, that's exactly right, I'm, I'm, uh, helping managing the soil, we, I drafted a soil and groundwater management plan for this, uh. Uh, employing best management practices for stockpiling that Jason covered, it's really using the bins, make sure there's no runoff, um, and, um, the stockpiles will be covered. Um, with a six mil poly, keep down the fugitive dust, and, uh, I'm contracted as well, sort of independent inspector, to make sure those stockpiles are covered, so they'll be out there at least weekly to. Um, if not more frequently, make sure the, the best management practices in the soil groundwater management plan that we developed are being properly implemented by Bond, so.
Okay, so there is a plan and a contingency plan in case we discover there is dust that's migrating and. You gotta, you gotta a plan that's gonna take care of this.
Absolutely.
A written plan.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, can you share that plan with the Conservation Commission? Cause as it, so, Jason had come to the Conservation Commission, of which I am the chair. Um, and our biggest concern was the proximity of this soil being stored to the river. Now, there's a fair amount of. Um. You know, stuff in the way, there's a curb, there's some woods, um, but it does dip down right. You know, stuff in the way, there's a curb, there's some woods, but it does dip down right. Right near where, you know, the 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 topography dips down right near where those soil is going to be stockpiled. And that is the area of greatest concern to us. So, you know, we might ask for if it if it looks like soil is starting to migrate. I'm not as concerned about dust as I am about runoff and siltation. Especially if we have a major storm, which. We is certainly not out of the question. So we might ask for some hay bales or some silt fence or some wattles or something to be put. On top of the curb, you know, just on the other side of the curbing.
Would it be better to have it there or would it be better to have it inside their fence line?
So we we are planning to have it with both, you know, inside our fence line to to. Around the entire perimeter of site one, the only the only site that's going to have any type of soil, so. That is currently something that is in our plan and like I said.
That would be hay bales?
We could either be a hay bale or we use, you know, a sediment sock material, which is kind of, it's like a, you know. Let's say a twelve inch diameter. I'm not too sure exactly how thick it is, but it's basically like just an elongated tube. That you just stack around to say hay bales would 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 serve the same function.
Right, my my concern would be, I mean, usually we prefer to see especially. In on soil, we prefer to see silt fence towed in with the straw wattles. Which tend to be six or eight inches in diameter. But the hay bales on the pavement, you're not going to worry, you're not worried so much about invasive seeds in there. And they provide a taller barrier.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly accommodate that along.
We're a right to farming community, so we prefer hay bales.
Well, the Conservation Commission doesn't prefer hay bales because it's usually loaded with bittersweet seeds and all kinds of. Stuff that you're then planting in a new construction site.
Planning board meeting, not this.
Oh, sorry.
But I mean, to answer your question, we can certainly accommodate that on the on the western side of, I'm just looking at the plan now, the western side of site one. And we could certainly take a walk if you guys had. At an opportunity, I think that was something Carolyn you would ask to do anyway. Before we had set up, so we can, we can certainly be, you know, accommodating to that request and, you know. It's something that's going to be ongoing, like it's it's not going to be, you know, set up on day one and we're going to leave it. It's something that we're going to have to. You know, maintain throughout the life of the project.
Right.
So help me out and. If this, if it could pitch back to the planning board. And. As a result of the overlay. Which. Is for a shopping mall. Then. How do how do we engage with this proposal? It. If it's not a use that's allowed in the overlay. How how do we? How do we deal with with that question? Are we looking at this as though the overlay doesn't exist and that it's the limited industrial zone that lies beneath the overlay? In which case. It's an application to. To have a use in the limited industrial zone and we're ignoring. The overlay? I was trying to figure out how to. How to thread the needle here.
But the overlay had to be abandoned before it reverted back to the industrial zone. You got to be careful with that because it's going to exist in other spots. You only have the you have the overlay over the entire entirety of the property.
Right.
And an abandonment of an overlay should go back before the town citizenry.
Yeah, or a modification to the overlay to allow the use. If it's a major modification needs to. If we thought it was a major modification, we'd have to go to town meeting as well, right?
At least a public hearing or check.
Yeah, I mean.
At minimum, a public hearing.
Right.
There was, was there, was it a just a meeting or was there a public hearing? For the ZB, I guess it was just a meeting where other where. Butters attended and were.
Well, they scheduled a hearing.
Oh, they did, okay.
But.
So there were several butters showed up that were concerned about the noise.
Yeah, and then in but before they. Engaged and opened the hearing, they heard from town council that they didn't have the authority, given the fact the overlay existed and that was within our realm.
I see.
Now, the the general manager for the mall is in attendance and she just brought up that if the fact that it's temporary in nature, it's not a long term. Lease, if that helps with the overlay issue.
But it's it's the use that's allowed or not allowed.
Not the timing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tom Eloise.
Can you promote Eloise, please?
Yep. I I was just looking at it from a point of does this help those the mall survive?
Without question.
Times.
Yeah. But. That's not how the planning board has to make its decisions, I guess.
That's true. But extraordinary times require an extraordinary choice. I will rest my case. Thank you.
Thank you, Eloise.
The good news is if we scheduled a hearing and it was on the. Twenty first. We'd have plenty of time to post it and we'd also have the opportunity to ask town council. For opinion on. Our authority to.
Well, I think that question was answered, right? They said it was our purview.
Well, they said it was our purview, but they didn't say it was a use that was would be allowed. I mean, that's. That's without some sort of. I mean, can it simply be a public hearing and the planning board? Takes on the responsibility of saying that it's not a modification that's significant enough to, you know, require a town meeting vote? I mean, it was the town meeting that put the overlay in place.
Correct.
And and so the the notion is you honor the town meeting's voice. When they say these are the uses that can. Be placed upon that parcel. And and. They understood when they voted that 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 would be what the planning board would honor, I assume, so. If we. If we take it upon ourselves to say these uses that are not in the overlay could be allowed. Then are we are we unleashed essentially? What what faith does the town meeting have in that? We'll respond to their their request or their vote? That I think that's the question we have to ask town council. And we've got time to do that. That's the good news. I mean. We don't have to, I mean, we could schedule a hearing, go ahead.
Definitely schedule a hearing because I'm sure time is of the essence for everybody involved.
And so that puts us at the twenty first and then we can. We can say to town council. Give us some guidance and we'll have that well in hand before we we have the meeting, so. I'd I'd feel more comfortable. With town council saying. Yeah, you have the authority. It's an overlay and you you have site plan approval for this overlay and if you think it's. A use that is compatible with what the town meeting voted, you know, go ahead. Or somehow they explain to us that the underlying. Industrial, limited industrial zone has some. Benefits, you know, I. I don't understand that, but I maybe someone can explain it to me.
So we we really haven't had experience where something that was an underlying. Zoning has reached through the, okay.
No, because when you think about overlays. This is the most complicated one because of the fact that that limited industrial zone exists underneath it. And I've always assumed that. If if for some reason, like you said, the the overlay, the the shopping center overlay was discontinued. The limited industrial zone would still be there and.
Correct.
That the town wouldn't have to take any action. Someone could come in and simply say, I want to utilize the allowed. Options in that zone and we'd say, okay, let's talk. But when you put the overlay on top of it. It seems like what town council is saying is that interrupts the opportunity for the ZB A just to deal with. The limited industrial zone on on its own.
Right. All right, so let's do this. Let's schedule the the public hearing. For the twenty first, we can do it at eight thirty. And then that way we can notify butters and everybody else, make sure everybody gets it has a vested interest, at least has the opportunity to attend. We can talk to town council or get permission to talk to town council to find out whether. The under whatever is allowed in the underlying can reach through the overlay. And whether the planning board has the authority to. Deem this as a minor or major modification that should go beyond a public hearing.
Yeah.
Do we do we want to understand more about the noise issue since that's really seems to be the primary issue for the. Butters who showed up last time?
So I can I can speak to, I guess, our experience with that and I something I did send to the ZB A was just a comparison of. What our white noise backup alarm sounds like to what the ambient noise was at six A M, six thirty in the morning at the mall. And it really was no different. Like it's something I could certainly submit to the planning board for their review. We can also take steps and put. I think it's actually on our plan to put. Sound blanketing along the west side of the. Site one, which is what side the butters are closest to the mall. That's something we we've done in practice before, so certainly something.
What is that exactly?
It's just, it's a it's a thickened blanketing that can be attached to the fencing. We go, we'll go as high as the fencing is, which is a made for fence.
Those eight feet highs, but it's it's something. It contains some of the noise.
More than Cabela's has.
I'm sure.
And again, I can I can submit with the videos that we had for the ambient sound existing versus what. You know, we would have comparable to a white noise backup alarm, which again should be the only thing that we have on site that would. Be any kind of noise generation.
The the other potential noise and it it depends on the driver, I think. Is that when you release. And and empty your your dump.
Oh, yeah.
Some have the capacity to really let that tailgate come back and knock the hell out of the the box. So it empties anything that's still in there. And I I know from experience here in the village, we have somebody that's pretty good at that, so I don't know if that's. An option that drivers use just because they get a kick out of it or because it's effective and empty in the box. You know, is it deliberate or is it necessary? That's a question, but it does make a hell of a lot of noise, more than the. Backup beeps from any equipment do, so.
Well, and the the backup beeps are nothing like white noise. You know, if you have the same volume of those two things, it's not the an equal amount of annoyance.
Right.
We we cause called it, it's called a white. Or are dumping. From a loader into a truck, they rattle the bucket on the on the loader. Usually smaller loaders, but.
Right, it's called a the backup alarm is also just called a white noise backup alarm in lieu of a beeping. It's it's more of a.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, it's just, it's a, and I again, I have a video of it. I can certainly forward to the planning board. For their for your review, but.
Yeah.
You've probably you've probably heard it before, Jay, you you've probably heard it before, Jay. It's not a, it's not a beep. It's more of a. Some people call it like a duck. It kind of sounds like a duck quacking, yeah, so. Yeah. But to your but to your point, Tim, with the with the trucks, it's certainly something we can. We can discuss with, you know, our our team, so it's.
That was my sense is.
Yeah.
It's some people take great pride in their ability to make a lot of noise with that tailgate, so.
Yeah.
Have you identified the trucking company? Have you awarded it yet? Do they know? Do we know who?
We use a combination of either internal and truckers or we supplement it, so we we they're companies that we use all the time and it's they're.
They're subcontractors to you, they're not your own forces.
Okay, occasionally, it's it's project specific depending on on resources.
Okay, so on this particular project. What do you intend to do? Do you have contractors or do you?
More more than likely would be a combination of both. It probably would be some subcontractors, but again, they're. People we use all the time and those relationships are quick or one phone call away for those that.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
Did I hear you correctly at the beginning of the meeting that you haven't actually been awarded this contract yet or you have?
We have.
Okay.
Yep. I mean, I I don't want to say for, I probably should say for us is that it is. The time is of the essence item, but I'm certainly understanding the the processes for this too and. You know, trying to trying to do the trying to go through the process in the correct fashion.
Well, we're trying to react as fast as we can, so we have you on our next meeting, that's.
Certainly appreciate that, I do.
Yeah, and the hearing notice has to be at least fourteen days in advance and.
Yep.
You know, so it sets us back.
So that was the other comment I had. So we we did a similar notice with the ZB A. I think it was two two runs in the local paper. You know, one one fourteen day, one seven day prior to the meeting. Is that the same? Would that notification need to be done again for this meeting on June twenty first?
The planning board will take care of the notice. If if you can share with us the notice that the ZB A had you put in the paper.
Sure.
Then we'll we'll refine it to what we need to put in based on the planning board's specs. And then we use the item which ends up being the two Fridays. So if the meeting were to be on the twenty first, we'd have it in the third and the tenth. The first fourteen days, yeah.
Is the. Is the email address I had used before, is that an adequate one? I think it was planningboard@townofberlin.com or is I know I. I copied Eloise on it. I can certainly copy her on any correspondence I have with that.
Yeah, I look at the planning board one about once a week.
Okay, yeah, so I can certainly, I'll try to find the. The notification that was given to us from the ZB A this 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 evening and forward that to the group, if not sometime tomorrow. And I can also forward you the the videos we had taken with the. The noise comparison from.
Okay.
Yeah, the way the item is set up now, we have to have notices in on a. Tuesday, I guess, so it would.
Like Tuesday at two or something.
Yeah, so we we would get it in on the thirty first and that would put it in the paper on the third and the tenth and that would make the hearing on the twenty first legal, so we're just. Because Memorial Day is Monday, you know, I would think they'd be, yeah. Good.
So we have to get it in by the end of this week.
Yeah, I usually I I try to. You know, I mean, they'll take it Tuesday morning, but I try to give it to them on Friday, like the twenty seventh, if that would be my objective anyway. And that way I feel more comfortable that they've got it because they usually get back to me and tell me they've received it, so. And then you'll be responsible for notifying the butters, which. I guess the ZB A said that we need to remind you that that includes the city of Marlborough, right?
That was not something issued to us, but we did have the the list of. Um, that was not something issued to us, but we did have the, the list of the butters, I think, was generated from Eloise, so um,
Yeah. Probably from the, yeah, generated by the uh, the assessors. Um, but be sure that the city of Marlborough is on that list if, if the assessors don't include it.
Okay. Um, Eloise, is it possible to, that we could um, get another, another copy of the, of butters that we had before uh, for the mail mailing notifications?
You have, you get that from the assessors. I read that from them, but I don't generate it.
Okay. Yep. I'll get with, uh, it was another colleague of mine that had, had worked that out, so I'll get with them to start that process again.
Or you can send an email directly to the assessors, assessors@townofberlin.com.
Okay.
So remind me, Eloise, did, did, did note, does the notice need to go to a butters in Marlborough in addition to the town, the city of Marlborough?
Yep.
So we
They would contact the assessors in Marl-
Marlborough.
And ask, give them your address and they'll tell you real quick. It's all done by uh, computer.
Yeah, because I, we have an obligation to notify them too. Okay. Good.
Is there anything else? Any other board members have any comments or questions? Okay.
Good.
We have our marching orders.
Alright.
Jason, do you have any other uh, comments or questions for us before we wrap it up?
No, I don't think so. What, I mean, I would guess just the action items I'll have is uh, I, I'll find the um, the the notification for the uh, that the ZBA provided us. I'll look to send that to the planning board and copy Eloise on it. Um, we'll get the, the list of assessors. We'll get those uh, the labels, get that process starting um, this week. Um, I'll look to also include those couple of videos we had for the noise ambient and what we plan to have uh, on site. I think that's it for us at this time. And then I, you know, the date that uh, you generated was June twenty first at eight thirty.
That's correct.
Yep, same, you know, I'm assuming same Zoom.
It's going to be a Zoom. Yeah, we'll be, we'll be publish a link in our agenda. Um, usually our notice goes out the Thursday before the meeting.
Okay.
With the link, so, and it's on the Town of Berlin website's agenda anyways.
Okay. So I don't, I guess the only other question I have and I don't, uh, we had to submit a, a petition for the ZBA. Is this kind of cover that petition for the planning board?
I don't think we
You submitted an application.
Yeah.
Okay. They're very formal, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I've yet to see an application for the planning board, but I've only twenty five years, so.
And you never will.
Live in hopes.
All right, yeah, so the
That is true.
So there, there, yeah, there's nothing, nothing formal we'd have to submit for
I guess you've already talked to them. It's
Talked to us and we've scheduled a hearing.
Okay, all right, fair enough. That's all I had and I don't, Shelley or Paul, if there's anything else you guys had to bring up, no.
Great.
So.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, appreciate the time, everybody.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so um, we had them on for half an hour. We bled a little bit longer than that, um, but I don't have anything else. Um, other than any timely items anybody might have that wanna throw something out there.
So what happened to the Central Street thing?
Uh, they tried to log in, but couldn't or something. He said, she sent me an email saying that she could see us but not hear us or could not hear us. Or maybe it didn't even say that. I, I don't know whether they, she could see us or not. I don't know whether she logged in with a computer or with a phone.
Okay.
Could I mention one thing?
Sure you may.
Uh, the only one that has signed the document that has to go to the Worcester Registry of Deeds is wonderful Tom Sanford.
Woo, now I could take the victory out.
There you go.
He's so special, isn't he?
Yep.
Um, that was left at the town offices, wasn't it?
That's correct.
It was, it left in the planning board mailing box.
Totally forgot. I was actually there last week too.
Okay.
We're not signing any plans, so it doesn't matter anyway.
It does matter.
They don't, they don't ask me to do it if you're gonna submit. I gotta keep them happy too, you know.
I'll come up with some excuse to come up there. Don't worry.
Looking for a resignation, maybe?
Do you have any, are there any uh, surveys in your box there out front?
As I've gotten surveys, I've put them in the planning board box.
Oh, so that's where the two came from. Okay. That answers that question. So I don't need to go to the town hall after them?
Nope. Thank you, Potter, and
No, I'm
To go and sign the thing.
I have to go see Ju- June and I are talking about funding for the housing production plan and the Center Village study. And I've interpreted the Center Village study as part of our ongoing master plan because it has to do with housing, economic development and transportation, all of which are part of the master plan. And as such, master plan funds, which when you talked the other day, we had ten thousand dollars or so in addition to the new five, right? So
Yeah.
We could, we could use that master plan money and some additional master plan money for the housing production plan and then steal from Eloise to pay for the rest of the housing production plan. Um, and I just wanted to have your blessing if I try to explain it that way to, to June.
You have my blessing. Good luck explaining it to her.
No, I'll have no problem.
So we have seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-one cents.
And that includes this year's five?
Twenty twenty.
Yeah, it shouldn't.
Not yet. Doesn't include.
It, it, that should happen June first.
All right.
It'll be for twenty twenty-three.
Right.
June.
Okay, great.
July one, so I don't know that, there was nothing on the stuff that she sent me for a twenty twenty twenty-one. So did we spend it already?
Maybe we didn't even ask for it.
Hmm, that could be.
We may have skipped it.
We may have skipped the year.
Yeah, because we did have such a baggage, but um, we'll get rid of that baggage and still have five in the bank at least. So uh, depends on how much we want to steal from Eloise. She has money now from CPA, so um, using five from us and sixteen from what they've been given over the years for um, affordable housing, wouldn't necessarily be a threat to them because they're going to get fifty thousand a year from CPA anyway, you know, so.
So uh, when you plan our meeting, so do you want those, the um, forms that she used, that June used?
Yeah, because I, if you want, I'll go and check them off with her.
You around them, what's tomorrow, Wednesday? Were you around tomorrow morning, first thing?
Sure, I'm picking asparagus. Come on out. You can help. I'll give you some clippers.
As long as I take some asparagus home.
Oh, yeah.
All right, I'll swing by in the morning and drop these off and give you the two surveys.
What time?
Well, you, you're way up earlier than I am, I'm sure. What time's good for you?
Anytime's good. I just, I'll, I'll, I have to go to the post office and manually open the roll-up screen customer door because something has failed. And uh, I've been arguing for a long time that it's failed because the post office broke it and you broke it. You are responsible. Their representatives in Cincinnati suggest that um, every so often that I have to fix it and I get back to them and say, but remember you broke it. And they, uh, so now I'm at a point where I'm thinking, uh, screw it, I'll just fix it. And we're probably replace the whole damn thing. It's twenty-five years old, but so I have to go there to manually open at a quarter of eight. So if you
Yeah, I'll be there.
For that?
Yeah.
I'll be out, I'll be I'll be in one of the asparagus fields either. Yeah, just drive, drive down behind the stand and toot your horn. You'll, I'll, I'll acknowledge your presence.
Okay.
It's a deal.
It's a deal.
As long as it's not five.
No, it won't be five.
Say that again?
I have a suggestion for how to solve your economic problem with the post office.
Oh, what is it?
Concede on the window thing and give him a fuel surcharge of two or three thousand dollars a month.
There you go. For driving over to the post office to open the window.
Exactly. Well, on a tractor, you know.
Yeah, you know, diesel.
Right. Use a lot of fuel.
All right. Do you want a motion to adjourn? Are we done?
I think so. Jay wants us to be done. Cut them up past his bed.
Right.
Sorry.
And our goal, our goals, our goals still are to there's two, there's two things I'm, I've been thinking about, I guess. One is this question about the mall has made me wonder if we need to be more proactive about potential uses in the limited industrial zone or in that overlay and perhaps even in the limited business zone. Wh- what, I, I'd like, I guess I'd, you know, as we've talked about things that we ought to be reviewing. Um, I think we need to review some of those.
I definitely think getting clarity on what the latitude that we have to allow alternate uses for that space
Yeah.
will be very helpful.
Yeah.
Um,
Yeah.
Because depending on how limited that is, we may need to it, as you said, if we, if, if all, if we're, if people are going to start getting creative about uses over there,
Right.
then we need to know how to um, be able to work with that.
Yeah, because I think i- if we're going to go to a town meeting in the fall, if they're not going to tell us what their list of possible uses are, I think we need to objectively look at what we'd be willing to accept and maybe make that modification to the overlay so that at least they would know what we were willing to embrace.
Right.
Even if, even if they don't, I mean, are we willing to embrace certain types of medical services, you know, are we, and we can, you know, we can get a sense from town council as to like you say, do, do we have the authority to make some of those judgments or do we really need to go back to town meeting? So
Yeah, the Natick, the Natick Mall I was reading the other day, Neiman Marcus is closing in September.
They already closed. They already bought it. Somebody already bought it. They're going to turn it into a life sciences.
Yep.
Life science.
They want, they want to add two stories.
Yeah, they're gotten it and they're gonna take off the skin on the outside of it so that, you know.
Funky facade.
Facade's going away.
Yep. Yep, but they're putting, right, they're putting a life science lab and office space there.
Yep.
Um.
So that's the type of question I think I'd like us to ask.
Uh, we, yeah, I, I, I think so. The, the problem that I'm going to have with this is, is that you know, whatever we come up with and maybe we can come up with a half a dozen things that, that, you know, we're comfortable allowing and that type of thing.
Yeah.
They're always going to find some other use that we haven't even thought about because
Sure.
they haven't thought about it yet. Somebody hasn't come along and presented it. So at some point in time and maybe this is the gateway that allows us to have that authority, um, you know, we, we can make the determination, maybe we need to go back before town meeting every single time if it's a major change. Like Neiman Marcus, it's a major change. It's not mall related. It's, it's now life sciences. But I think that people would be willing to embrace life sciences as a, the next logical step for a failure in the mall. You know, and
Right.
It, it, retail space, you could be looking at empty blank spaces forever or you can turn them into something that's going to be in that adaptive reuse. I mean, I think there's precedent in town for that already. You know, with property that changes over or things that change, it's just how willing uh, people to allow the planning board to have latitude with plan around zoning.
I, but the life science one is a good one. I mean, if, I, I think right now it's allowed in the limited industrial zone.
Right, so is that where our list, is that where our list comes from?
But it's an overlay, so you got to be careful and, and, and that's the way you got to watch things punching through. Because I can make the argument even with this, that there are other limited business pieces in town that they could rent or make a deal with somebody to be able to put this yard in or temporarily put this use in where they don't have to go through a lot of gymnastics. Because it's already in allowed use. So.
But it, um, it's but it wouldn't be allowed in a limited business zone.
It, no.
And, and so it would only be allowed in a limited industrial zone, and this is the only limited industrial zone that's left.
Okay.
I think.
Is the Worcester Sand and Gravel Site
Limited.
Limited business, yeah.
And Masbro is stoned, uh, the Berlin stone dollar end of is met a limited business.
Yeah. Um, but then, but it, I'm wondering again about the life sciences stuff and whether we need to look at the limited business zone and ask ourselves if that's an appropriate use for, for that zone. Because what we keep finding is somebody, well, the, the realtor from Atlanta keeps calling and saying, what about this? And I say it's, it's not a, a use that's allowed. Our limited business zone uses are pretty
Limited.
Limited.
So, that's what I was talking about was, you know, have some dialogue over the course of the summer about what ifs, you know. And it's spurred to some degree by this question with Solomon Pond, but do you want me to talk to town council?
On that question, yes, please.
Okay, I'll ask Margaret.
Yeah, we need
Okay, I'll ask Margaret if she'll listen, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. I hear a second.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing not, I'll ask you to vote. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tim Wheeler.
Aye.
Callan McDonald.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you all.
Sweet dreams, Jay.